I have a call room, I call to order the meeting. Secretariat, could you please invite the attendees into the conference room?
Good morning. You're my friend, aren't you? How do you sit? Are you asleep? Are you not nervous? I'm sorry, I'm going to miss you. Do you want to turn off the lights? Good morning.
Good morning. I would like to welcome the Central Policy Unit, the current and former Chairman of the Research Council, and deputations and individuals to the meeting. The special meeting is for the purpose of hearing views from the various sectors on issues arising from the Public Policy Research Funding Scheme. You may wear the earpiece and select the preferred channel. Channel zero is floor, channel one is Cantonese, and channel two is English. There should be eleven deputations and individuals attending the meeting this morning. And earlier on, the secretariat has passed on the received submissions to members and the administration. If I may remind the deputations and individuals that your written and oral submissions are not covered by the Legislative Council Powers and Privileges ordinance. First, I will invite Professor Wong Chek Kay, Member of Central Policy Unit, to brief us on the paper. Can I defer to my colleague, Mr. Stanley Wong? Of course. But before you start your presentation, I will invite the deputations and individuals present here to speak one by one. I'll decide on the speaking time limit depending how many will speak. But please, Mr. Wong. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members, Scholars, and Colleagues. Good morning. I'm grateful to the Panel on Education for arranging the meeting today. So with members and groups interested in public policy research, we have this opportunity to have exchanges. Before the meeting, we have submitted a paper to the secretariat, and I'll now highlight the selling points in the paper. In the 2004 Policy Address, the administration proposed to strengthen public policy research. And then in the 2005 Policy Address, it was announced that every year a provision of $20 million would be given to promote public policy research in higher education institutes. It will last for a period of three years. And then subsequently, CPU allocated $20 million to the Research Grants Council under the UGC annually. We have also set the directions of research for reference by the council. And then LGC would receive and vet the applications for funding. Now, we have extended the scheme twice, and it will be extended to the year 2014 to 15. The objective of the Public Policy Research Funding Scheme is to promote public policy research and nurture the relevant talents. We also encourage the publication of research findings so that we could promote discussion in the community about public policy. The Central Policy Unit passed the relevant research findings to the Reference Bureau for their consideration and reference, too. Up to the first of February this year, 69 projects have been completed. Ninety-four projects are in progress or in the pipeline. Since the launch of the scheme, the socio-economic and political landscape in Hong Kong has changed significantly. There are also rising public expectations on the government. That is why we need to have timely and issue-specific public policy research. The CPU has reviewed the various aspects of the scheme. And because the scheme has been in operation for some time, we have decided to revise the mode of operation so that the scheme could keep up with the times. But the objective of the scheme remains the same, that is, to promote public policy research. Under the revised model, the CPU will administer the day-to-day operations of the scheme, including identification of the research directions, areas, and scopes, invitation of applications, assessment, and monitoring. And we will actually engage scholars to help with assessment. The scheme will continue to be open to academics from UGC-funded institutions, other degree-awarding higher education institutions, and nonprofit-making public policy researcher think tanks could also apply. In the course of the vetting of applications to CPU have regard to research needs, or rather, the CPU will have regard to research need in inviting applications so that we could have more timely launch and completion of research. At the moment, there is limitation. We only invite applications once a year. But in future, we'll have regard to the actual needs, and we'll be making more than one invitation in a year for applications. We propose to start the revised model in 2013 to 14. But for projects already given funding, they will not be affected at all. After the announcement of the scheme, we note that there have been views expressed on the revision of the mode of operation, and concerns have been expressed, too. In particular, in terms of academic freedom and the quality of research, there have been views expressed. We want to ensure academic freedom and quality of research. The CPU will invite scholars that command public credibility to be members of the vetting panel. We will also invite the government officials involved in relevant policymaking to join us in considering projects. This is to make sure that the research topics are what we need to look at. And then we will also have a system to ensure the academic freedom and autonomy of research. The CPU respects and has faith in academics, professional ethics, and independence. We believe the revised mode of operation will be more effective in promoting public policy research, and it will encourage rational and objective discussions among various sectors of the community. We welcome comments from members, and we also welcome views from different sectors in the community. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stephen Wong. Yes, Regina. Mr. Stanley Wong, thank you. Now, the paper mentioned the amounts you've given to different universities. But I'm more interested in the topics of research. Perhaps you could ask questions during Q and A. Can they provide information as soon as possible? I'll give you a chance to speak, because I do not know what you've researched into, so how could I speak? We will have time slots for members to speak. But I think you should provide information earlier. Now, it's time for the deputations and individuals to speak. Five minutes each, please. When the bell is rung, please stop speaking. Please be concise in your speech. If you want to supplement further information, you could provide it in writing. First, Dr. Feng. Why, why? Thank you. I would like to thank the CPU for its explanation. Now, of course, scholars have strong professional ethics and they are independent. What we're concerned about is that you're changing the rules of the game. And therefore, the independence and autonomy would be denigrated. That's what we are worried about. Now, the original objective of the scheme is this, that now the government has to conduct many studies and research. They have to engage consultants to give them views, and that costs a lot of money. So $20 million in comparison is a drop in the bucket. The government has plenty of resources to commission consultancy reports and to conduct such research. But why is it that several years ago, CPU decided to allocate $20 million through the Research Grant Council? Because the Research Grant Council is a relatively independent and assuring mechanism for vetting the applications. So it serves an entirely different purpose. The focus is really on independence and objectivity. And it's not... So they don't have to have regard to the will of officials in designing the research. Of course, we have faith in the ethics of scholars. But then if the vetting process itself is not independent, and it's not about the quality of the... Or it's not about the academic value of the researcher in terms of vetting, then it may lead to different outcomes. Now, how would such a development affect the community and even the governance of the government and so on? First, governance. Through the scheme, the administration wanted to obtain independent views, which may not always be to its liking, to spur them to improve upon their policies. And the basis is not political arguments, but rather academic debate. And we fully embrace this objective. In the past, the scheme could serve that purpose. But now, by changing the rules of the game, we are concerned that you will even invite officials to be involved in vetting, so there's no independence or objectivity to speak of anymore. So from the point of view of scholars, there's no more independence to speak of. Though then, the question begs as to whether there is independent vetting. And then you may not be doing research purely on academic grounds, but rather, we want to do what the government wants. And then we'll be doing research that better meet the needs of the government and officials. Now, I have to stress that government has plenty of resources to do that sort of work. They don't need this $20 million for that purpose. The $20 million are exactly to allow room for independent research to take place. And the second point, how would it affect the academia? Now, if this scheme is in operation, many scholars may choose not to apply under the scheme. Because already in universities, we are overly emphasizing research outcome, and research outcome is linked to our performance evaluation. So through this process, if the applications are to be vetted by the Research Grant Council, then we could get that recognition. And colleagues would be encouraged to conduct such research. And their research would benefit the community as a whole. At the same time, it will help their own performance evaluation in a way. But now that this scheme has changed, then there may no longer be academic recognition of the research effort. And then colleagues may just choose to go back to quality, high-end academic research. They won't be so concerned about policy studies and analysis. And that will affect the academia, of course. But how would it affect the community, too, with this revised model? Now, without the $20 million, it would be like a silencer, silencing different voices. And then we only hear voices that echo the government's policy. So the only good purpose served by this scheme is undermined. Actually, it would disappear altogether. So this change would only hurt the scheme. It won't benefit it at all, thank you. Mr. Law Yook Kai, Hong Kong Human Rights Manager. Thank you. The CPU explained... There's some explanations say that times have changed. Now, you said in the past you would already tell the Research Grant Council what the research directions you're looking at. But why have you changed it further? Because you think that still you do not have enough control, you want to strengthen control. And the community is worried about you strengthening consult, that's what it is.
You're also changing the structure of the scheme. This is very worrying. CPU was a think tank. But now, people are criticizing you, saying that you are a central propaganda department. You're simply doing the job of controlling people's thoughts. This is what you are doing. And today, even if you want to do a good job, I think you have already lost your credibility. It takes lots of time for you to show that you are being impartial to the community. You say that you're going to invite academics to sit on the assessment panels, and you're going to invite officials to be on the panel. It shows that you are going to meddle with it. Well, Ms. Dr. Feng has lots of faith in the academics, but not for me. We see lots of really shameless academics in Hong Kong. It's not difficult for you to find such academics. If you want to know who, I can give you a name list. It's just that it's not appropriate for me to review the names here. If you want to exercise control, you simply have to put these people on the panel. At present, we already have established mechanism within the LGC. And people on the panel are not doing something that is strange. The Lima Declaration makes it clear that academic freedom should be free from intervention from the government. But now you're doing exactly the opposite. Academic research is done by academics so that they will act against violation of human rights. Lima Declaration makes a very good point. If the scheme is handed over to the CPU, will we see what is advocated under Lima Declaration? You are doing a messy job in terms of getting the right people. So Fei Kao is only appointed because she has good network. It's simply because of that, and so people criticize you heavily on her appointment. We're worried about the role of CPU if it continues like that. There is no particular panel in Leshco to monitor the CPU. That's why you can do whatever you want. You have done so much so far, and you are being criticized. Still, you propose to take the power from the academics. It just shows that you are trying to exercise long-term control over the academics. This is not beneficial to our community. Now, even if you act behind closed door... Well, if you say to those whose proposal is not taken on board, and you give them the reason, do you think they will believe you? Now, if you want to do something, you can do it yourself. Just don't meddle with the academics and ruin their reputation just to make way for government's policies. We have to protect our community so that it will be free from conflict of interest. We have to protect it against potential conflict of interest. But you are doing exactly the opposite. What we see now is you're giving all these unreasonable reasons so that you can intervene on various aspects. If you really respect people's rights, please stop what you are doing. And if you're going to go ahead with the revision, may I urge the Leshco to scrap the scheme? Next, we have Professor Lee from... Dr. Lee. Eliza Lee from Hong Kong Yu, Department of Politics and Public Administration. Concerning the aim of the PPR, Dr. Feng has already told you a lot about it, so I do not want to burden you with the details. I simply want to stress that, going back to all the policy papers and reports on the news, the scheme, when it was first launched, was not for the academics to come up with research that would please the government. The aims, rather, was to fund long-term research on public policy. It's only when we gain experience in this regard that we can leave the officials away from meddling with the policy. It's only with all these as our basis that we can enhance governance. To this end, academics have been pointed out that in terms of the direction and the topics of the research, they should be the ones who have a say. Now, the CPU says that it should be the ones setting the topics for research, and the officials will also intervene. You are actually taking away the autonomy from the academics, and you're going against the original aims of the funding scheme. Well, another point is about the source of the $20 million. For the funding allocation at the beginning, in fact, they do not come from the budget of the CPU. The former head of the CPU, Professor Law, already wrote an article on a local newspaper, giving you a detailed background on the scheme. In fact, he was the one who advised Mr. Tong Chi Wah to make use of the $6 million... $60 million to set up a funding scheme for three years. So we are not taking away resources from the CPU. Mr. Shiu wrote an article on Ming Paul. Also in January, he said that in the past, there was no mechanism set up to come up with the research on policy address by the CPU. Now, in taking away the powers of that thing, I think you are taking away powers from the academics. Now, the strong arguments for the CPU is that you want to broaden the application. They say those higher education institutions like Xuyuan and Zhuhai and some other related think tanks are not invited to apply for the funding scheme. And you are now opening the scheme to all these institutions. For the institutions other than the eight universities, which are not receiving government funding, what is a matter of policy? So it's not just the $20 million we're talking about. They are not eligible for some other resources as well. And now the CPU is simply focusing on the $20 million. And it seems that they are portraying themselves as the champion of justice. Because of all these reasons, they say they have to take back the vetting powers. But it's a very weak reason, weak argument. People also have doubts that you may fund the think tanks that try to please the government. In overseas studies, we understand that some think tanks are very closely related to political parties, even to the government. Should we give public funding to such think tanks? Overseas, such think tanks would not be funded by the government. If they want any funding, they should go to the private sector. So the CPU has the responsibility to explain to us how come without any consultation, they're opening up the scheme to the think tanks? Next, Professor Linda Lee. Thank you, Chairman. I've already submitted a written submission, and lots of other colleagues have already made that point. I'm not going to repeat the points they've made, but I have several points to make still. Now, the CPU is proposing the revision of mode of operation. They're going to revise the management structure and the vetting system. But they stress that the aim of the funding scheme will remain unchanged. But they are going to change the mode of operation. So how come you propose all these changes without changing the aims? We go back to the papers they submitted and statements they've made. And it seems they're saying the previous research do not really address the genuine needs of the government. And they're saying the revision is needed because time has changed, community has changed. So the previous approach is no longer suitable. That's why they have to take over the vetting system and the operation from the LGC. All these powers should go back to the government. The CPU just now stressed that they will appoint well-reputed academics to take part in the assessment, the vetting. But it's not an independent assessment mechanism, otherwise, that would not be under CPU. They're simply being consulted, and the assessment is not independent. What sort of changes have we seen in the community which lead to the revision proposed? The CPU's answer is simply wrong. If you just go down the street and ask an ordinary citizen, he would tell you, say, for example, in '04...
There's been a division of views, and this division has worsened actually over the past decade. The confidence of the public in the government has reached record low, unfortunately. We don't want to see that reality, but that's a reality. So between the government and the community, there's a lack of mutual trust, or rather, such trust is at a low point. Then how do we promote public policy research? And how do we make use of such research in order to face this situation? I've discussed with those in the academia, and I'm sure Professor Law Yook Kai would agree. Now, to do that, we should have independent... Independent in terms of being independent. Now, to do that, we should have independent, independent in terms of being independent of government, because the government is the party that people do not trust. So, if the government presides over research and then views are put forward, and how can we convince the public of these views? Definitely, we need a platform operated by a third party, and there should be more participation of these groups. Now, for the government bureau and so on, I would urge you to accept interviews from us more often, and then you should also disseminate information quicker. Don't say that this is confidential, and that should give the impression that you're not willing to communicate. And I must also make a point. Now, in the past, when we conducted research under the RSG, RGC scheme, the outcome could be made public because the copyright does not belong to the government. It's like any other academic publication, so then we are able to make public the information. But then, of course, the government departments, including the CPU, commissioned various independent studies. And of course, some of the studies may be taken up by the university, but then the copyright of such research outcome belongs to the government, and there is very limited dissemination of such outcome. I think the CPU has said this many times, a lot of the work we do cannot be made public. So imagine, if the research outcome cannot be made public, how could we promote common reasoned debate in the community? It can't be done. Please allow me another thirty seconds. Now, we can't pin any hope on any individuals. We're not talking about any sage individual presiding over the situation and changing the system. We're talking about well-established mechanism being changed. I think that's absolutely wrong. Next, Mr. Wong White Quark, representative of the Labor Party. Now, we'd like to make two points. The first one, the administration and management of the CPU in itself, and secondly, what is the nature of public policy research? Now, after the reunification, if we look at the administration and management of CPU, we do spot a major problem. There is no public accountability to speak of, and there's a low level of transparency. Now, say, when it was Professor Lau Shu Kai's days, the CPU coordinated opinion polls, but then the CPU never explained the entire process. For example, how interviewees were picked, how sampling was done, and so on. There was no such information. And also, the weddings of the questions in the questionnaire, there were a lot of problems against such questionnaires. They were not made public. So that's definitely against the professional code of opinion polls. And we believe they can't just hide behind the pretext of confidentiality. So, they were allowed to get away without making public questionnaires and so on, and so the public and the media would not be able to monitor the operation of the CPU. After all, the CPU is funded by public money. And of course, there are also examples that in certain questionnaires, questions were leading. For instance, and it was reported in the media, for example, do you agree that parents should take along the children to protest and demonstration? Or on the sixth of March, when the police used pepper spray before, at the demonstration, that they warned the protesters in line with the guidelines? So these were classic, classic counterexamples. So, we believe that in terms of public policy research, if it is to be managed entirely by the CPU, the public policy research will no longer be professional, and they will no longer command public credibility. And given the style of management of the CPU, I'm really worried that such a bad practice of the CPU may spread to the academia if they're going to revise the scheme as such. Now, so as, of course, it's important that we bear in mind the role of the CPU. Another point, media reports have asked whether they're going to find, make a policy bureau vet the applications, and whether they're trying to find others to give them advice. So that leads to some problems. Because officials and academics look at policy research entirely differently. They, you know, they have different considerations. Now, governments make policies, and these are usually tailor-made policies, but when academics conduct a policy research, it won't be tailor-made. They only care about the truth, and they try to seek the truth. And seeking the truth is, must be the very core value of research. And what do you mean by seeking the truth? That means when research topic has been decided upon, and a scientific approach, selfless approach, and professional judgment adopted, so that they could analyze information collected, and then consider the various issues being touched upon in terms of socioeconomic issues and so on. And then, they will look at the short-term, medium-term, and long-term object, policy objectives, and see how these policies may affect the stakeholders. So they will do structured and systematic studies. That's what academics do, and when these studies are completed, they will be submitted to the government bureau for their reference. So, it's a misperception to think that public policy research is about asking academics to give their advice to the government. And if we have tailor-made research topics, then actually you have a conclusion, and then you have someone to do research to that conclusion, then we are worried. It would be the repeat of the National Education Handbook. That is, policy research is not being properly done. It's just political patronage to favor certain parties. And then, the policy research outcome would only be reduced to a form of political propaganda tool. Next, Mr. Li Sheng Hong, Secretary General of the Hong Kong Federation of Students. Now, apart from me, there are other student representatives of different institutions coming here to give our views. We are students very concerned about issues relating to the institutions, our resources, the values, and also we care about social justice. Now, we've heard a lot about this controversy. People say that this is just twenty million dollars. As for institutions, they are given hundreds of millions of dollars a year, so this is a meager sum. But no, I cannot accept that sort of argument. It's not just about how small, small an amount it is, or how big an amount it is. It's about values. The universities are not being robbed of just twenty million dollars. Other people are taking away the values that universities cherish most, that is academic autonomy and independence, and freedom. The CPU is taking away this funding, so it's trampling on the values of university. It's interfering with university autonomy. Because at the RGC, the applications vetted by academics who are well-respected, but now CPU is taking away this funding scheme from the RGC. Its purpose is clear to all. It wants to bring on board government-friendly think tanks and scholars. So this decision is to help the government create public opinion. So it's a machine for the government to generate public opinion. So, academics' research should be natural, but now they are going to serve the government. Now, regarding academic research as a political means, that's an insult on academic autonomy. That's why some academics and students are very much against this idea, and we will only trust the government less. The CPU is now opening up the scheme to think tanks and other researchers other than the UGC-funded institutions. So this will make the quality of research be dragged down. And there's been no consultation whatsoever. It hasn't gone through Lashco either, and it's now changing the use of public money. That's transgression. Now, we have students, we have professors here, but we don't have representatives of institutions. We've heard on the campus that the senior management of universities find this revision problematic. The senior management doesn't think there's much they can do about it. So that shows that values of universities are being eroded, but it's only the professors and the students who are coming up, out to speak up, and the senior management is nowhere to be seen when they are the ones who are supposed to speak up, and we find it most disappointing. Two months ago, the Federation protested already against this decision of the CPU. The response we got was that the CPU would decide on the research topics and directions. Just now, the CPU told us that in the funding scheme, there'll be the involvement of government officials. So you're just telling people flagrantly that we are trampling, trampling upon your academic autonomy. What can you do? There's nothing you can do about us. So we find it very disappointing, and we are against this decision of the CPU. We hope the CPU will cherish the values of universities and the autonomy of institutions, and I hope they withdraw their decision.
Next, we have Mr. Young Ching Yin, President of the Student Union of CUHK. Good morning. Chairman, members, teachers, officials, and friends, good morning. I'm here today to express this revision, to be exact, our worries about this revision. Before I tell you our views, I have to tell you the difficulties the academics are facing at present. But for every department, they have resources which come from three areas. First, they will come from the number of students you get every year. And you get funding for every student enrolled in your department. Next, you open self-financed and rather expensive courses, so you can get some money. And thirdly, from RAE. RAE means getting funding for research and employing technical staff and also research staff. So the fundings are mainly from these three sources. At present, the, this environment is really against local research. Every year, under RAE, every department has to submit all the achievements of their staff. For example, the number of essays published. The UCG Report 2013-14 is here. Four-star world-leading, three-star international excellence, two-star international standing, one-star regional standing. These are how they categorize the research. Now, the mission of a university should do something for Hong Kong to provide knowledge on, to shed light on the local community. But for such research, it's only rewarded as a one-star research. For the twenty million funding scheme, it's there to create an environment for academics to research on local society. Now, even when academics apply for PPR funding, they have to put in lots of cost. There are details like they have to come up with the budget and the manpower required. In academic across the world, all these research in this area, or all these details are not really valued because they do not look at the cost you need to throw in to come up with local research in Hong Kong. That's why the academics have to put in lots of resources for the research. And they have to submit a proposal to be vetted by international academics under the scheme. Now, in 2013, topics involved, for example, telecommunications sector and the low-carbon transport between Hong Kong and Shenzhen in the future. Now, these are the topics vetted. They are not less important, but they tilt towards the administrations. So it's not about creating new knowledge, as should be the job of universities. Now, at present, the CPU is proposing all these revisions. What does it mean? They tell you, they've told you. Now, the academics, apart from taking into account the views of academics around the world, they should also take into account the views of local officials. If you say something that's not pleasing to the local administration, they will not give you encouragement. That means you are not encouraging local academics to conduct research on local community. Our universities should be serving local society. We should not be serving or creating knowledge for the mainland. May I have one more minute? A simple point. Now, we see there are problems concerning population policy. Eddie Ng just mumbled when he answered why there's a shortage of school places in the northern district. Why? Because we don't have any research on this area. The funding scheme, the vetting system, based on trust. We do not trust the administration in picking topics for us. CY Lu and his administration and the CPU, do you trust them? If you trust them, maybe you should trust the really bad forecast for this year. Please stop the revision. Next, Mr. Eddie Chan, President of SU Lingnan University. Good morning. Just now, fellow students and academics have told you their worries about the revision. I'm here to give you a larger picture of this so-called minor revision. The government is intervening into the universities more and more. The academ, the universities are being turned into a battlefield in politics. Twenty million dollars is not a large amount. I talked to some professors and though, some other professors in the RCG. They also think it's not a large amount, but the move of revision is a stupid one. Universities is the pillar of an unfair community. We rely on the business sector and the government for funding. We have to see whether we are pleasing to their eyes, that is, to the governments and even the CPU's eyes. The government exercises control over universities with its powers over funding. Many universities reluctantly or happily respond to all these directions by the government. directions by the government. It said that the future research should be issue-specific to the development in the community. For example, the development of telecommunications sector. So you see, there are already restrictions to the research and now you're exercising political intervention. Apart from controlling our funding, you are exercising political pressure on us. The liaison office also exercise pressure on us. They are very blatant about their criticism on us. Member of CPU, Ms. Sophia Cowe, talked to me at the court of the university. I mentioned the criticism on Dr. Robert Chung and Ms. Cowe said, were the official simply uttered certain criticism? What's wrong with that? But these people are responsible for appointing members at the university and they do not know what study and research are about. How can you trust these people? How can you trust these people for protecting academic autonomy? And next, you say you're going to get officials to vet the proposal. Who are you going to engage? Paul Chan, Matthew Chan? What sort of qualifications do they have? R G C is well-equipped with academics, that is an academic basis. Why are you taking away the powers from R G C? Now, if you ask Dr. Anthony Chan to sit on the panel, what's wrong with that? That's because the people do not trust the administration. That's why I say the revision is a stupid move. People do not trust you. Now, the chancellors of Hong Kong U, Lingnan, maybe even Baptist U will change. Because I don't know about B U because they do not get the land, the lot at Liwai La. Still, you are proposing to politicize universities. You are sitting here to push forward this. You are being used. You direct the topics, the students, what the students can learn, you control the fundings. If you continue with this, we will fight you down the road. I'm sure in the future, many people will join us in protecting the academic autonomy. Mr. Chairman, Vice President of Hong Kong Poly U S U. Just now, fellow students and academics have already made that point. I want to tell you how I look at this revision. We wrote to the CPU and got their reply. They said they would set direction for research topics. Well, it seems there's nothing wrong with it, just setting the direction. But if you think twice, inserting the direction, doesn't it mean intervening with academic freedom? The P P R funding, as mentioned by our scholar just now, aims at putting forward some innovation in the government. But now, the government is saying they are going to set down the direction and the topic for your research. It just go against the aims. The government says through the P P R funding, they would like to promote research on public policy. But if you think twice, in fact, the government is trying to make use of the research to create more support for the government. In setting down the direction, topic, and areas for research, what role does the CPU play? They set the areas and also the direction. What are we supposed to do? We simply do the research, but we don't have the freedom to choose the topic. Academic freedom doesn't mean giving people a topic and just let you do whatever you want. That's not the case. That also covers setting your own topic. In that case, I don't think the CPU can say it's not intervening with the academic freedom. Does the CPU have the academic qualification like the R G C in vetting the proposal? They say they will hire or engage the academics to do the assessment. I don't understand it. Why do they take over the vetting powers from the R G C? Unless you say you don't think R G C has the right qualifications. If that's the case, you can tell Professor Roland Cheng and Professor Benjamin Chan. You're not happy with that. Otherwise, you really have to explain why you have to be the vetting authority instead of the R G C. It's an unnecessary move and you are intervening with the academic autonomy. Next point, R A E. The government sets the topics and the academics is going to do the research. If that's the case, how can you ensure the research will gain a high standing under R A E? The revision will discourage academics interested in research in this area. You do not give them the confidence. In the past, as long as they get the good topics, they will get high standing for their works. But now, if the CPU set a very bad topic and the academics' work will be classified as not very valuable. So how can you say you're not affecting the academic freedom? You're saying you're taking away the funding. You are saying that academics should serve the government. It seems to me that you are actually engaging in a rogue fight. I'm not sure whether the CPU will give me an explanation later. The next question is for Professor Benjamin Chan. You are the Vice Chancellor of Hong Kong C U. If you're against the revision, will you state your opposition? The students, the academics have come out to protest, but not representatives or the people from the senior rank of the university. Why?
Mr. Ricky Kwan from the Civic Party, thank you. At the start of the meeting, the CPU colleague explained the changes to the scheme. And he said something really well, that is, public expectations on the government are rising. But then he probably forgot to mention that the public is becoming increasingly disappointed with the government as well. So what are our expectations on the government? We want to see diversity of voices in the community. We want the government to listen to public voices and minimize undue interference. We don't want the government to interfere with the public. We want to ensure freedom of speech and academic freedom in Hong Kong. So I don't follow the logic. So there are rising public expectations of the government. The people are increasingly disappointed with the government and then you want to strengthen control. And for the twenty million dollar funding, you want to give it back to the CPU. So we are just doubting whether this will be an overcast hanging over academic freedom. And then when scholars conduct the so-called research in future, that will be the basis for the government to simmer its way through in policies. Now, perhaps I shouldn't use the term withdrawing the twenty billion dollar funding. In two thousand and five, Mr. Tong said in his policy address that the Public Policy Research Funding Scheme was to be dispersed by the U G C. He said that we would strengthen the capabilities of governments to conduct research internally. And then in the next three years, every year, twenty million dollars will be given to the U G C in addition, so that it could engage the R G C under the U G C to promote public policy research by higher institutions. So that point's been made clear. Yes, this, some money comes under the head of expenditure of the CPU. But then you can't then take this as the resources of the CPU. Because if you do that, we are concerned that how are we going to spend this money? And definitely, what you're doing now flies in phase of the policy intention of Mr. Tong. Right now, the vetting of applications is done by the R G C under the U G C. And those responsible for vetting are people who command credibility, who enjoys a high academic status and they are relatively neutral in terms of their status. So the public could rest assured that funding is dispersed purely on the basis of the value of the research. That is, whether the research would contribute to society, whether the research would help us better understand public opinions and how then better policies could be formulated for the benefit of the public. But with this change, it backs the question of whether it may not be fair enough. You said you respect academic freedom. But the CPU and the R G C have different positions. The CPU is supposed to give advice to the Chief Executive, the Chief Secretary of Administration, and the Financial Secretary. The head of the CPU is a politically appointed official. So there's no neutrality to speak of. And then just now, many have mentioned that we have no trust in the government. Then how can we be sure that academic freedom would be protected? And how can we be sure that there will be credible public policy research outcome for reference by the government and the public? We hope the CPU will respect the original policy intention of this scheme. If you want to propose changes, you must come with strong justifications. You must consult the public and you must humbly seek the views of the academia. You should just impose your will, the government will upon rational thinking. The Civic Party urges the government to do this. If you insist on the change, then actually we appeal to the scholars to boycott the scheme to stake their position on preserving academic freedom. Mr. All Yu Lam from the Democratic Party. Now, after C Y Leng assumed post, he tries to control all different voices. The CPU is the agent of C Y Leng. And Sophia Cowe is actually in charge of the over three thousand appointments to various government statutory bodies, including the State Courts and Centers on Universities. Now, C Y Leng is elected by small circle election. He has no mandate to speak of and also he is good at sophistry. He has no, you know, no credibility to speak of. And if you put in place the scheme, it will severely undermine the autonomy of institutes of universities. Now, in the past, such schemes do not come under the direct supervision of the government. But now, CPU even wants to control the appointments to centers and courts of universities that will further undermine the autonomy of institutes. And also personnel appointments subject to political vetting. They want to only appoint people who are yes-matched to the government to the courts and councils of the universities. And then R G C is in charge of the disbursement of funding under the twenty million dollar scheme. This is to promote public policy research so that the community could benefit. But then Xiaoshen Po, head of the CPU, did not do any consultation. And then he just wrote to the R G C to say that starting from next year, R G C will no longer have to be in charge of the scheme. The CPU will vet applications on its own. So that's transgression and that's about the politics of subsuming a scholarship. So the CPU has distorted the original policy intention of the scheme. Without consultation, it just took away the vetting powers of the R G C. There's some form of oppression. And it also does not change any, it hasn't gone through LECO. It's not giving any regard to the role of LECO. It shows no respect to LECO at all. And it's opening up the scope of eligibility. And then people may worry whether the research is of high quality and people consider whether there's any transfer of interest. The government should try to listen to as many different voices as possible. The R G C is now in charge of vetting applications because it's neutral and it also commands academic credibility. So it could come up with good suggestions to the government. And also, the vetting is done by scholars enjoying high academic status. But then the CPU is taking away the vetting powers of the R G C because it wants to prevent more research issues that are critical of the government. Also, it wants to bring on board government-friendly scholars and think tanks. Now, originally, academic research is supposed to be neutral, but now it may become just a propaganda tool of the government. So that's an insult on academic research, is trampling upon academic freedom. It will actually make worse the crisis of governance on the part of the government. Now, I'd like the CPU representative or other government officials to explain this. We, many of us have asked this question. This is a well-established system, there's not been any controversy, there's not been any mistake. Is there any specific reason why you want to make the change? And this change would actually lead to more dissent. Can you explain why that's the case? Thank you. There are so many, thank you, deputations and individuals for your oral submission. Now, if possible, please leave behind your speech so that the executive can follow up accordingly. CPU Education Bureau Research Grants Council, any response, please, to the views of the deputations and individuals?
Yes, Mr. Wong, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Many groups of scholars have given their views on the revision to this funding scheme. I'm grateful to them. Let me respond to some of the salient points. First, why do we want to revise the scheme? Their aim is to make sure this scheme moves with the times and then they meet the current needs of Hong Kong. Under the new model, we have taken place of R G C in vetting applications. We keep things to the original approach in vetting applications. Because all along, it's been the CPU which decides on the research needs and research directions. And then applicants would propose research projects on their own. This is not going to change. The funding approach would also not change. The funding approach would also not change. But why are we proposing the revisions to the scheme? Now, in my introductory remarks, I mentioned that Hong Kong faces various issues. We need all sorts of research topics, and such research must be done in a timely manner. So time is of the essence, the current approach lacks the flexibility. Because right now, we only invite invitations for application, we only invite applications once a year. But now there will be more flexibility, we will accept applications throughout the year. And when we receive an application, then we'll conduct meeting, look into that, and vet the application as soon as possible. So that's one important reason. Just now, many groups made this point. Public policy research. Within the government's reference bureau or departments may not have enough involvement in public policy research, say in terms of providing relevant information, there may be certain inadequacies at the moment. Under the new arrangement, the CPU would play an active role of an intermediary. We will ask the reference bureau and departments and those at the front line implementing the policy to have more exchanges with the researchers. Also encourage the reference parties to make available the reference information earlier for the use of researchers. We may also consider various approaches in making that happen. Now, if you've been involved in research projects, you would know this. After we disperse the funds, the researcher would, of course, then proceed with the research. And we will have no more contact with the research on the approach or methodology of the research. But now, you know, it's just initial thinking. We are thinking, maybe if it's necessary, the researcher could go to the relevant government facilities and conduct a field inspection or field research. Then they could have more communication with the frontline officials. And that's one point. And also, some made another point just now. For tertiary institutions outside the UGC-funded institutions and local think tanks, they may now apply under the fund. We believe we are expanding the scope of participation in the scheme so that more engaging in public policy research would be able to promote more discussion under the scheme. We want to expand the scope of coverage of the policies being researched into. I think that's basically the aim behind the change. Anything from the Education Bureau, please? Any response? Education Bureau, just very briefly. Just now, many expressed concern about academic freedom. As far as the Education Bureau is concerned, we have all along supported academic freedom of institutions. And basic law is stipulated clearly under reference articles that any educationist or anyone in Hong Kong indeed enjoys the freedom of speech and academic freedom. The eight UGC-funded institutions are statutory bodies. They have their own autonomous, they have their own system to carry out their research and so on. So we will continue to defend academic freedom and freedom of speech within our capabilities. Anything else from the Research Grant Council, Professor Wah?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I represent the RGC today here. I do not represent the Chinese University today. The RGC embraces academic freedom and institution autonomy. And all funding proposals must go through peer review, and the standards of proposal must meet the standard of excellence. So that's, those are principles we adopt in considering funding proposals. Now, in the past ten years, there were some seven hundred and forty-eight proposals submitted, and hundred, and in the past ten years. These were proposals put forward by the scholars themselves. In twenty twelve to thirteen, one hundred and twenty-eight proposals were submitted. And in the past five or six years, SPG, under SPG, there were sixty-six proposals, thirteen received funding. Yes, the twenty million dollars may be a small sum, but the scheme has actually supported the research of many academics, and so it's important. Now, the funds were withdrawn before I assumed post. So after the announcement of the revision, I'm trying to see how we could address the matter. The secretary is going to make appointments for me to visit each of the institutions, and I'll be going to meet with them one by one in the next months or so to see what views are on the funding scheme and what the needs they have under the funding scheme, and what they would like the RGC to do as the next step. So after I have done so, I hope I'll be able to give you a more detailed report. Thank you.
Professor Chin, just speak to the microphone, that's fine. Thank you, Chairman. For the PPR, all along, I'm involved. The then-chief executive, Mr. Tong, announced the PPR scheme, and I was the chair of the RGC. And several days before I left office, before I retired, the vetting powers was taken away by the CPU. I'm more familiar with the details. Deputations did not have exactly the appropriate understanding of the situation. I'll give some explanation later. I'm not representing the government nor the RGC. I'm here today so that I can help you out in understanding the matter. Well, just now, Professor Benjamin Wah made it very clear. In terms of academic freedom, RGC attaches great importance to that for RGC. For research done by students and academics, they will be given academic freedom, and the topics will be bottom-up, never top-down. Academics can pick their own topics. They have the freedom to publish their results and to pick their topics. If we detect any deviation from these three principles, we do not compromise. Choosing your own topics, your own areas, and the freedom to publish research, these are the three main principles. And under them, all research funded by RGC have never been intervened by business sectors nor the government. So fellow students and academics, this is the point I would like to clarify. Now, the papers and some deputations did not give a very clear picture. First of all, that the PPR simply accept applications from the age universities but not other institutions, that's not true. Professors from the age universities are responsible for making the application, but they can invite other parties to join the project, including those from private institutions, overseas institutions, and some other organizations, including government bureaus. Just that the applicants must be people from, professors or academics from the age universities. So all the people, other parties can also get involved, not just those from the eight UGC-funded universities. Another misunderstanding is that about the changes. In fact, since two thousand and five, various changes have been made. We met with Professor Lau several times a year to give him suggestions, and sometimes he took on board the suggestions, sometimes not. We worked as partners. Every two years, three years, the scheme would be extended. And when the scheme is extended and the funding was allocated by the CPU, I would inform the chancellors of the age universities. Now, the last time, the CPU said the funding will last up to twenty fifteen. So that's what I passed on to the age universities. There were changes made. For example, three, four years ago, half of the funding would be given to the SPPR, that is the Strategic Public Policy Funding, Research Funding. The CPU will tell us that there are certain areas they would like to see research on. So half of the funding will have direction, and half of the funding will see directions from the academics. Just now, Mrs. Regina Ip asked some questions about research topics, which is not here now. Some lawmakers, some deputations think, or some other people think that research by universities are not effective immediately. Let me give you certain examples about these projects to show that there are values to them. I only have an English version, I can tell you about the approved topics. For example, integrated policy, social integrated policy for children born to mainland mothers. And also, creating an affordable retirement scheme in Hong Kong. Trans and implication of the socially disadvantaged people, something about Hong Kong and China's development, and mapping Hong Kong gaming industry. So not all the projects are about commerce, we touch upon social issues as well. Another study, study on suicide problems in Hong Kong. Engagement of immigration and minority students with schools and civil society. Hong Kong and Guangdong University partnership. Now, these are of values to our society. Mrs. Regina Ip asked just now what professors did in the past few years. This is my answer, I will leave a copy here for your reference. Well, let's move on to the question and answer session. Meeting has to end at noon. So who's interested to speak? I want to know before I set the time limit. Let me read out the names first, see if I missed anyone. Mr. Kenneth Chen, Fernando Cheng, Sarah Lee, Claudia Mo, Yip Kin Yun, Albert Ho, Helena Wong, K K Ma Feng Kwah, Regina Ip, Wong Yook Man, Sid Ho, Charles Mok, Leng Yiu Chong. Yip caught him, so fifteen waiting. And Mr. Cheng Yuen, sixteen altogether. Now, as I've said, we have to end the meeting at noon. There will only be one round of questions, four minutes each. Have to remind members that under eighty-three A of ROP, if you have any direct or indirect pecuniary interest, you should review the nature of the conflict before you speak. And members, please bear in mind, the meeting was organized by the education panel. So we should focus on what's on the agenda and not deviate into the role and function of CPU. I hope we will, members will focus on academic research because this is an education panel meeting. First, Kenneth Chen.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, deputations, for coming here, especially students and colleagues from universities. Thanks for sharing your views with us. And I would like to thank you, the two Chairman from the RGC. I think this is completely wrong, totally wrong. What sort of logic do they exercise? That's the robbers' logic, they're trying to rob people of something. The original aim, as proposed by Mr. Tong, was to give fundings to RGC, which has the autonomy to encourage public policy research. And there should be a distance between the research and administration so that there will be potential for the research on public policies. We should create a new path in this area in Hong Kong. But then, several years after it was launched, they make changes that go against the original aims. This is completely wrong. They tried to say that the scheme will continue to run, and basically nothing, there will not be much changes. But now, looking at the paper, you add one more point, that you will ask officials to vet the proposals. There are credible and incredible academics. For example, the deputy or assistant professor from Baptist University. Mr. Victor Sit. But who's credible? Well, who is going to be on the vetting panel? For example, if I want to do a research on education, maybe Mr. Eddie Ho will, Mr. Eddie Ng will be on the panel. On development, maybe Mr. Paul Chen will sit on the vetting panel. So asking officials to sit on the vetting panel is really wrong. Next point about money. I read the responses of Mr. Shu on Ming Paul. The wording was really strange. He said, "We have money, so we should not ask them for money." Because the amount amounts to forty percent of the funding for his unit. That's exactly robbers' logic. There is well-established structure and mechanism for funding. You can talk to the secretary for FSTB. You should not ask us to fund our own funding. If it's not robbers' logic, what is it? Before C Y Leng became Chief Executive, he wrote many articles, one of which was about research. He said there is a need for public policy research in Hong Kong. He made a very good point. Just give one hundred million dollars every year for such research. And it's not a large amount, and Hong Kong should respect the findings of research and research projects. Well, in two thousand and nine, he wrote this article. Well, how come he's not giving the one hundred million dollars? Rather, the CPU is now taking away the twenty million dollars from RGC. Our major worries is that it's better for you to have networking than to have knowledge.
Dr. Fernando Cheng, thank you. I'd like to thank the
I'd like to thank the deputations and students for coming here. I think it's important. Yeah, our next generation is always better than us, because there are no interests involved. So they're not blinded by interests, and obviously, they have, they are more perceptive. Now, I must declare interest. I'm a staff member of the Polytechnic University. I never applied under the PPR or the SPPR, and I'm sure in future, there will be less of a chance for me to apply successfully under the scheme. Now, just now, Mr. Wong explained why they wanted to make the revision. The main reason, that is, why they want to rob others of this money is because they want to make sure that money will be spent in a way that meets the current needs of the community. So that means in the past, the scheme couldn't meet the needs of Hong Kong then. Professor Chin gave us a lot of examples just now. He was in charge of the funding scheme in the past. And many of these research topics, you could tell, meet the prevailing needs of Hong Kong. So there's evidence that is, we've done this, and we are telling you what we've done. So that's what Professor Roland Chin put forward as evidence. That is, in the past, under funding scheme, they have done research that met the prevailing needs of Hong Kong. So CPU, what evidence do you have to show that? From 2005 to 2012, there were research projects that did not meet the prevailing needs of Hong Kong. Show us the evidence. And then, Professor Chin mentioned three points. You know, freedom to choose the research topic, the autonomy to set up the project, and so on. So are you going to negate such practice? And it's the case that only those invited may submit applications. Are you not going to make public invitation list? And then, would there be the case that certain research outcome would not be made public, because the CPU has always been doing that? It doesn't make public many of its research outcome. Do you want Professor Chin or Professor Wong to respond, or Mr. Stanley Wong? Well, I would like Mr. Professor Wong to speak, because he hasn't said anything yet. Thank you, Dr. Fernando Cheng, for your questions. Is actually to meet the policy needs. The focus of the PPR. You'll see, so far, for the research projects, they are mostly about current affairs, they are about some public policies. But the vetting has been based on international practice of peer review. And then, the focus may be slanted a little. I'm not saying, because you know, the point, the focus is about some creation of knowledge. It is peer review, and it's not so much about how we could improve upon public policies or how we could address issues. We want to change this rule of the game. So it's about more flexibility on the focus. My question is specific. I asked him to show evidence that in the past, the PPR, SPPR. Dr. Cheng, he can't show evidence in fifteen seconds. You must let him answer the question. Can he provide a paper? Let him finish, and then I'll make the request. I just want to make three examples. Under the PPR, of the hundred and fifteen projects approved, three involve just one research, governance and politics, the other, housing, and the third one, population. Thank you. If you wish, I could provide more details. Yes, he said that if necessary, he could provide more details. There's no need, okay? The secretary to follow up. Next, Mr. Ari Lee. Mr. Chairman, friends of the RGC, thank you for coming here to give your views. Now, I don't have much time, so I'd like to take the four minutes to express my views. There are many structural problems in society. Strengthening the team of public policy research is necessary, not just for the government, but towards political parties and various stakeholders. And those advocating public policies, that's why I support the government's initiative to strengthen or to expand the team of researchers on public policy. For UGC-funded institutions, they have their research teams. Of course, they have attained a certain academic standard. I've often talked to universities, and I've also heard a lot of complaints from self-funded or private universities. They said that for the current financing model, there is no level playing field for them. They would like to have a fairer arrangement, so that they could also expand their research teams and upgrade their standards in various fields. Today's topic is, of course, about public policy research. If various institutions could upgrade public research, policy research standards, it would only bode well for Hong Kong. Now, it's good to have a partnership arrangement with the UGC-funded institutions. But if you allow other institutions to join in the competition, it will actually help to boost these standards of public policy research as a whole. Now, of course, there are few resources being chased by many, and different institutions may have different views arising from the discussion. That's expected. The RGC said that you're going to discuss with the institutions and to try to find out their views. I hope you will meet with different institutions. That's the first point. Second point. Research projects. The topics must be interactive in nature. Apart from a bottom-up approach, sometimes a top-tongue approach is necessary too. Now, the research institutes may want to research on certain topics, but then the government may also want to ask research institutes to help conduct research in certain areas. Oh, sorry, I ought to declare interest. I'm on the Senate of the Hong Kong University of Science and Technology. Now, if the research outcomes make public, it will help to boost the standing of public discussion about public policy. So in future, would you make the arrangement to publish the research outcome? I hope you could give an undertaking. Another request I have. Many have expressed concern just now about the independence of vetting or appointment. How can you give assurance on that? First, about publishing the reports first, Professor Wong. We will put all reports on, upload all reports to our website, and applicants, after five years, the data set will be archived. Is it the case in the past, the reports were not published, but your new practice that you're going to publish the reports? No, he didn't say that. He just said that he will publish reports in future. He never said it wasn't published in the past. The assessment panel, independence of the panel, we engage local scholars to sit on a panel. Ms. Claudia Mo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To say that CPU is like a robber, I think you're already beautifying the image of CPU. Because sometimes, you know, they, sometimes robbers could do good as well, but these are just thugs at most. So they keep expanding, they keep stretching their hands further and further. Su Shin Po is not here today. I'm sure he will say to me then, yes, I'm gonna have tea with you now. And, you know, if he sees, he's going to say that to me, I'm sure. The CPU is now like the central propaganda department. We have, you know, people behind the scene trying to control things. Now, you say you're going to engage scholars with credibility to sit on a panel. I think whoever you find, they will, you know, suffer as a result. And you have people with spines, lacking calcium. There are so many such scholars. I can give you a long list if you want. I really don't see why we want to change the system. You want to change the system. When I was a journalist, Philip Haddencave, Sir Philip Haddencave, always said, "Don't fix it." So what's broken now? What's gone wrong with the system? Why do you want to fix it? Just now, Sid Ho told me privately, "It's just twenty million dollars, really." The government sits on hundreds of billions of dollars of research, and now you're playing around with twenty billion dollars. I'm really touched that we have student representatives here. They have this rage, because they want to safeguard morality. But then, someone from the university is not here. Now, can I ask the university lecturers this? I teach at the Baptist University and the Chinese University. I teach in the news journalism department, but I have no interest declared, really. Can I ask the two professors? You say you want to stand firm on academic autonomy, and then we should boycott the scheme. In that case, would you face difficulties in terms of funding for research?
Yes, Dr. Lisa Lee. If we want to apply for research funding, the main sources of research funding in Hong Kong are the RGC, really. But for social science and research and so on, because public policy research has very much to do with that. And, of course, policy, public policy research may not be confined to social science studies. But if we do not have this source of public policy research funding, then we could only go back to the RGC to apply under the NUTRF, or there may be other funding schemes that we could apply from. But then, we will have to compete with many different other research topics. And then, under the scheme, certainly, definitely, there won't be some twenty such research projects that we have now under the scheme a year. Professor Linda Lee?
I agree with Professor Lee. Yes, twenty million dollars may be just a small sum. Under the RGC, the scholars have absolute confidence in its operation. As we know, there could be a high standard of academic research. At the same time, the broad direction of research would focus on local policies. So local scholars interested in policy research could rest assured. So they could meet the requirements imposed by their international colleagues, on the one hand. On the other, as intellectuals, they may want to repay the community with their effort, and they're able to do that under the scheme. Thank you. Ten seconds, please. If we have to compete with various research projects, these themes, you know, for the GRC proposed, they are more academic in nature. As well, public policy research, it has a practical element. So if these projects are to compete with the other more academic projects, and then for projects in relation to public policy research, probably, they will lose out. They won't be too competitive. Next, Mr. Yip Kim Yun, Deputy Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, my concern is on two aspects. One, why is there a need to change? And second aspect, more importantly, how are you going to change it? How you change the scheme? It's all about the process. What have you done in the process? In the past, I've tried to explore into that. I asked friends of the CPU and the RGC. My conclusion is this. The whole process was just about a notification and a letter. The notification was on the thirty-first of October. There was a sit-down meeting. Mr. Su Shin Po just informed Professor Roland Chin that I'm going to take this game back. Professor Chin is here, he could confirm that. And the letter is that on the thirteenth of November, a letter was issued in response to the request of the RGC. The CPU saying that there are rising public expectations. But where are these public, these expectations being reflected? Because there was no consultation in the process. Who expressed views on the matter? What did the public say on this matter? Could we better reflect public expectation today, actually? How come in the process, there was no discussion with the RGC at all? And for the three-year funding cycle, it was actually truncated in the middle. Three years, it's supposed to be sixty million dollars. You just did it for a year, so you gave them twenty million dollars. And now you say, well, I'm gonna take back the forty million dollars remaining from the three-year cycle. And I always ask the professor that this is actually, you know, classic case for study about public policy decision. Why is it that no respect was shown to the RGC at all in the process? It's rather beyond belief, and I find the whole process unacceptable. And then, why do you need to make the change? That's another question. The CPU mentioned a number of points. Yes, I think these could be discussed. But how come there was no discussion? We're talking about public policy research under the realms of academic research. And now, you're turning it into commissioned consultancy studies. But you have plenty such studies already, being engaged by different billion departments. And now, what we see is that government are making scholars comply with their requirements. Now, an important statement was made by Professor La Shu Kai. The scholars lead and the government facilitates, but now it's the other way around. Do you have any questions, Deputy Chairman? No, not really. I think both, these issues ought to be looked into. That's why I'd like to propose a motion. And I would like members to express their views on the matter. I'll pass it to you. If we have time, then I will deal with the motions. So Chairman, please deal with the motion. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Albert Ho. Well, I would like to thank the deputations for coming here to express their views. As Ms. Claudia Mo mentions, they really deserve our praise, because they make a very good case, a very convincing case, and they show their passion to safeguard academic freedom. So you have my deepest respect. Now, we are concerned about the issue of CPU. I don't know what the future holds for us. The head of the CPU said, "The unit is a tool of the government." He makes it so blatant. Now, the budget is coming. I don't know if we will see any more changes to the CPU. But, well, if you do not have the CPU, then we will not be left with so many problems. Many deputations have told you, this is not a matter of money alone, but your move and the impact of the revision. It shows the trend of how governments were worried about possible intervention into academics. Now, some may say this is a stupid move. I think this is... I think this is a very hushed remark. I find it cunning. You make it so obvious. Why are you taking away the twenty million dollars? Why CPU is taking away this money for management? I'm very surprised because Miss Darry Lee, an ex-co member, got it all wrong. That is all right to go top down. What does it mean by academic research? It all boils down to autonomy. The freedom to set your topic, your areas and to publish your result. If it's for the government to set down the topics, well, the research will be meaningless. Every year, do you know how much money is there for the bureau for research? One example is Companies Law. We spend like hundreds of million dollars. We did a research project costing forty seven million dollars in nineteen ninety seven. Pescato Report. It was done by a Canadian academic. But we just threw the report away because it was of no use to us. So it was a waste of money. The government sits on so much money. And for academic research, we hope they will be of benefit to the community. The topics given by Doctor, Professor Chin are closely related to us. And the academics looks at, look at all these issues in the long run. They do not simply focus on the policies to be rolled out in the short run and to offer you a piecemeal solution. For academic research, you also need to go for comparison. Now, my question is, are you taking away the three freedoms mentioned? So if the academics do not come under CPU, is it rather they cannot do the research? Miss Helena Wong. Perhaps many of us took to the street in two thousand three and shouted for Mister Tong to sit down. But terms changed. I'm here to support Mister Tong. Now, the PPR was proposed by Mister Tong and the vetting system by RGC was also proposed by him. Your revision goes against the aims. The policy address in two thousand four, in that policy address, Mister Tong gave the background about PPR. That is, we should have solid public policy research to achieve better policies. So the scheme was a decision made by Professor Lau and Mister Tong. And people at the universities, I'm sure, agree is the right move. Because it offers research that is distance from administration. Research that will not be pandering to the administration. It's going to be beneficial to the administration. But you're proposing all these changes. If you give us good enough reasons, we'll support you. But I don't think the reasons are sound. You say you need to do research in a timely manner. Does it mean that you want to have a research done immediately? So the policies can be rolled out on the next day? Is it so urgent? If that's the case, it's so really worrying. Secondly, the CPU says it should act at the middleman. But in fact, at present, now, if the academics want to get the point of view of the government and figures from them, they can always do so. If you want to go the other way, what if you, well, you can always ask the super servants to give the data to the academics. That would address your worry. Another point about think tank. Professor Lee said think tanks are attached to political, have political affiliations. They may have their own agenda. If you handle the fund to them to conduct research, people will have doubts about the projects. People are worried about politics, taking over academics and you are encroaching yourself upon others. Well, in the paper, then, it was said that the RGC will be the vetting body. But when you propose the changes, you haven't consulted the universities, the FC of the Leshco nor the frontline teachers. You simply act on your own. This is outrageous. There are so many applications every year, hundreds of them. How are you going to vet them? People question your qualification. You may say you engage academics. But we're talking a vast number of areas. Do you have sufficient academics to look into all these topics? We keep saying we have to be an international city. But how come you are kicking away overseas academics? My question, or no, will CPU withdraw the changes? Well, members seem to spend four minutes to ask questions. You do not leave any time for the official to give you answer. It's hard for me to do the job of chairman. Please apply a written answer to my question. This is the education panel and I don't want to divert into politics. Let's look at the facts. Mister Xu is not an academic, but he is the head of CPU. He is now declaring war against people who are against the government and he has to make use of the internet and other mechanism. Next, Sophia Cow. She's also in the CPU and she's helping Mister Siyuan Lung in appointing people they like. The third move concerns public funding schemes. They try to put the scheme under the control of the two most trusted people of Siyuan Lung. One is Mister Xu, the other, Miss Cow. Of course, twenty million dollars is a small amount. But the message is, the academics should know they are getting at you. And this should be a warning sign. If you listen to them, you may get the twenty million dollars. If not, the RGC, the UCG can go against you. So it's not just about the twenty million dollars. What sort of government is it when they try to take away twenty million dollars? They have two hundred, two thousand six hundred billion dollars if they want to roll out any public policies. They can get or hire academics from the eight universities they found agreeable so that they can pave way for their policies. You may remember for the healthcare policies, when the government want to press people to buy insurance policies, they can get the academics to help them do that. But that's not enough for them. In the policy address two thousand four, to avoid public policy from being politicized and emotional, the CPU will work with the RGC concerning public policies. We spent nine years on this. They don't want the policies to be political, emotional and sweeping. Professor Wong, you are an academic. Is it the case that the UGC is not doing a good job in pandering to the administration? And so the policies will be reduced back to a sweeping and politicized and emotional ones. And we only left with Mister Xu, who is extremely loyal to his boss. Professor Wong, UGC is an independent academic body. And we have our own minds, we enjoy autonomy. On question about CPU, taking over the PPR. It's not about politics. We just want to help the government to get better grabs of data, to gain basis for policies. And to shorten the time of research, say, for example, shorten it to three months. And in some special cases, the research, of course, can last up to two, three years. And under this mechanism, the research will be academics led. I'm on the assessment panel. I'm just the secretary. I'll be looking at the yardstick of the assessment and of course, doing the assessment itself. Well, there have been lots of misunderstandings about assessment. People think that official participation will be decisive. We have two academics on the panel, in fact, and one from the relevant bureau. One official from the relevant bureau. The official's role is to show what sort of limitations or constraints they face in rolling out the policy. Now, if you do not take into account the constraints of the bureau in the research, it's not okay. You have to get a good grasp of all these. Academics look for knowledge, but for the administration, we look for practicality. There is a discrepancy. And our focus is on this discrepancy. Next, Mister Ma Feng Kwong. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you for your views, friends. I do not want to politicize the debate. I think we should look at the matter in a more rational manner. I was a legislative councillor when this policy was announced. I'd like to give you the background, it's not in the paper. Whereas legislative councillors, when we saw the launch of the, of many government policies, the reference was consultancy, consultancy reports. And many of the reports were compiled by international consultancy firms. It was not desirable, that we had strong views. We tried to lobby the government, including a CEO and a CPU. And we stressed strongly that it's necessary to have local research institutes. We would like local universities to play an active role. But at that time, there was no interest in the matter from local universities. Because as you know, as mentioned just now, there's no international recognition of such research effort and there were no resources. And there was no track record to go by also because during the colonial days, there was no such research. How did we change the situation? That's why at the time, I had a number of discussions with CPU. I strongly requested that we ought to support the participation of local research institutes in local research work. Even though they did not have the capability at the time, we must help them to gain such capacity. And because at that time, when there were competitive bids for funding, local institutes always lost out. So that's why this policy came about. Because we would like to encourage universities through the RGC to take part in such policy, public policy research. And then we could also build up their capacity gradually. Since the policy was launched in two thousand four, many universities set up their own research firms. They took up a lot of work. For example, West Kowloon Cultural District project, research projects, there was a series of them. And then this university set up companies to compete with other institutes and they took on many projects. So that was the role of the scheme. At that time, there was no consultation at all. The government launched the policy on its own evolution. And now, they're proposing changes given. Now you're saying that, well, how come they didn't consult and so on? At that time, the RGC said that they could not really launch a policy that focused on supporting public policy research. They wanted open competition, but then they were afraid there might not be resources. That's why there was this additional funding from the government. It's ten years on, we already have a group of scholars and local universities with the research capabilities. Can I ask whether there will be priorities given to encourage such a research? And now we have a group of researchers who have done some good work. And if other institutions want to compete as well, they're not given the opportunity. So isn't it the right time to review the mechanism? I think we should look at the matter from a rational point of view. What are your questions, please? I have two questions. One is for the RGC in future. Would you dedicate some of your resources to public policy research? Second question for CPU. Now, you will take control again of the scheme. Would you enhance the transparency of the outcome? Maybe publish part or all of the research outcome. But the Professor Wong has already said they're going to make public all the outcome. And you're only asking for them to publish some of the outcome? I'm sorry, I went to the washroom just now. Professor Wong. We are more than happy to upload all information to our webpage. Professor? Every year, we receive over one hundred and fifty proposals under the PPR, for PPR. That's why we attach great importance to public policy research. And we are trying to see whether we will dedicate certain resources specifically for PPR or not. We're still pondering our direction, but definitely we're not going to stop PPR. I can guarantee, I promise that we will continue with such research. Mrs. Regina, if it's not here, so let me read out the list. If you wish to speak, please stay. Because we are scheduled to finish at twelve. Mister Wong Yung Man, Mister Sit Ho, Mister Charles Marker, Mister Leng Yu Chong, Mister Kwok Him, Mister Tommy Chou, Mister Chan Kwak Chi, Mister Paul Cheh and maybe if there's time, Mister Lam Tai Fai. Mister Wong Yung Man?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Deputations, political party representatives, professors. I agree with most of what they says. I'm not going to repeat those points because we're concerned that we're going to talk about politics here. And some pan-democratic camp members really lashed out at this. Now, Sujinpo acts like a bouncer. He is being very vagrant, flagrant about what he does. So if we have a head like that at the CPU, let's forget about the whole thing.
There was a TV documentary, the first episode was on the head of the Peking University. You know, even when it was a time of war loss, there was a university at a time that embraced the spirit of promoting freedom of thoughts and accommodating various views. Teaching freedom, learning freedom, academic freedom in any civilized society. That is a must, that is a prerequisite. And of course, the government will have to fund these institutions. The UGC. Now, when I first joined the Now, when I first joined the legislature council, I asked that the UGC be abolished altogether. Who had the UGC last time? It was Laura Chow. And these people, they always take up these important posts of statutory bodies, but who are these people really? So it's all about political patronage, it's about the administrations assuming the academia and so on. But then, we have to look who they serve, the government, in other places governments are elected. But here, we're talking about political patronage, we're talking about abusing powers, we're talking about transferring interests, and you try to package it as something else. So what autonomy are we talking about? At the last term of LECO, it was also at this panel, on one occasion, there were the teaching staff and the management of universities having an open argument here, it's sad, all, most of them were, you know, holders of doctorate degrees. But then because they were just talking about petty interests and they were shouting each other, it's sad. It's because of the funding mechanism. Now, if the government gives funding to the universities, you should give them full autonomy, they should take charge, but now it's not the case. So universities can't focus on the real work, they compete with private universities for students, they take on too many students. These are UGC government-funded institutions, but they compete with private universities for students, it's ridiculous. Now, this is a special meeting to talk about withdrawal of the $20 million funding by the CPU. It is really, it's missing the point, it's a waste of our time. The higher education in Hong Kong is in a complete mess. Can you please ask a question? No, I have no questions. Because it's pointless. Let me finish, you must give me back my 10 seconds, of course. Yes, yes, I'll give you your 10 seconds. Because other members said that this was a wise decision of Mr. Tom. You know, it's baffling. And that person was from the Pandemocratic camp, how wise was he? He was just doing it a different way. I think first, we should abolish the UGC and two years in a row, I've also suggested that we abolish the CPU. Professor Wong should go back to teach. Okay, you don't need your 10 seconds, fine. Ms. Sit Ho, thank you, Mr. Chairman. $20 million, honestly, is a minor drop in the bucket. You spend $300 billion a year and every year you miss the forecast by tens of billion dollars. So CPU doesn't need to have money, is $20 million, nothing. But then to universities and to public policy researchers is about all they could get. So it's not that they don't have the money, just you want to take all the money away from you so that you can survive. And so that public policy researchers is about, you know, creating noise favoring the government. I, it's not about money really, it's all about politics. Because every year, the government always underestimated the surplus. So they don't really need that $20 million. And Joseph Len received a letter from lawyer on the article he wrote, and he made it clear in the article. He said, many of his friends joined the government, he wanted his friends to know what sort of job they are engaging in. I'm not going to ask the other side, I'm going to ask this side rather. But if I may also refute what Professor Wong said, and also what the Education Bureau officials said. They said that the change is to respond to changing needs and then you strengthen public policy research. But every bureau has its own budget for policy research. For example, Dr. Yoc Chow, anti-smoking initiatives. In several years, there were so many research projects on the harm of smoking. They spent tens of billions of dollars on those projects and they're not short of money. But of course, it's decided by policy bureau or the heads, they will put money in the subject they're interested in. For example, Education Bureau engaged scholars of Cambridge University on small class teaching, but they don't like the outcome. So they put it in a drawer, they won't even publish the outcome. But if some outcome is to their liking, then they will announce it. So we should just leave that to the policy bureau, you don't have to get your hands at these $20 million. Because otherwise, the academics have to do research that meet international standards, they may not be able to focus on local research. Of course, maybe if even for such local research project, they may have to hire students, so they need money to help with the research. Now, just now, Dr. Professor Linda Lee said there's no need to change the way you fund the projects. They always want to speak to you, but you only listen to what you like. But then, when you face critical research or interviews and you think that the outcome may not benefit your governance, that's why you refuse to accept such interview. So this is obvious, you're just taking away this money so you could control the scholars. I thank the scholars and the students here for coming to speak out. Senior management of universities not here, why? You know why, because many of them are CPPCC members, of course, they can't speak up. And they, their main job is to get, secure donation. And they also jockey to become CPPCC members. Now, I want to know what actually you're going to take in future, with this sort of funding, it will just make people lose interest in paying tax. Mr. Charles Mocker.
Mr. Chairman, well, maybe it shouldn't be a declaration of interest, but I think some time ago, many years ago, I was a member of CPU. I read from the newspaper today, that CPU has now become a political machine entirely. In the past, there was extensive participation, I was a part-time member at the time. Now, there were only 20 specially invited members, I don't know who these people are. All the, and already for the part-time members, many were just the second generation of the tycoons and so on. And now they are reduced in number further, I don't know how we could encourage white participation. Of course, this is not the Constitution Affairs Panel, here we're not to talk about the Constitution system. But even more than a decade ago, we always said that in Hong Kong, there was an absence of high standard of academic research about Hong Kong's policies. The scholars did not have a chance to do so, and it was explained just now, perhaps that was one of the reasons why the scheme was set up in the first place.
Now, first of all, I would like to thank the deputations, the students and academics for coming here. Now, you heard from them, they doubt the qualifications of CPU in vetting their proposals. Well, we're not doubting scholars like Professor Wong. But you really do not have the representation of the RGC and you do not have their independence. They also engage local and overseas academics, but not you. He said, the research was, is for the benefits of Hong Kong, address the needs in Hong Kong. But are you talking about the needs of the chief executive of CYLE? You cannot convince Hong Kong people because you do not have such autonomy and the transparency. I was supposed to ask whether the research will be made public, and you said, people asked you about that already and you said, yes, but how come in the past it was not open to public? For the CPU and other bureaus, you have conducted so many research funded by public money. And they were not made public. Well, do not hide behind the issue of copyrights, countries like the United States open up the copyrights. Now, I want to confirm one thing. Is the entire report going to be made public? Oh, I see you nod, so that's a yes then. Still have some time, a question. Well, I arrived a bit late, so I did not get a chance to hear the two professors. First of all, I'm very glad to see you, Professor Wong, I was your student, but you may not remember me. Do you want it to continue? Do you want the scheme to continue, in fact? Chairman of RGC, do you want it to continue? Let's speak from your personal point of view, we will definitely continue. Because we're talking about important research, which are of academic values. What some people say is of regional importance, like a student just now, but that's not the case. As long as the research is recognized internationally, even if it be it a regional research, it's of value. That's why we will continue with the scheme, we may even do a better job. Mr. Leng. Yuchong.
I really want to stay on educational issues, but this is a political issue. I cannot help from divert there to that.
Well, I would definitely stop you. Now, people say the CPU is a rogue. Is a robber, but it's even worse than that, they are oppressor. They are oppressor in politics, they do not have any conscience, they are shameless in getting their own, in pursuing their own goals. In paragraph 11, you said that you hope the PPR will render more timely support to a policy to address specific issues like poverty alleviation. And they would also like to encourage more academics to come up with the research. I'm sure the latter part will not be opposed, that is, to engage more organizations and academics. Because we think it's good to have healthy competition. But the problem lies really in the first part, that is, they want to address the specific issues of concern to government. At present, there are directions under RGC. Research should focus on local public policies. But if they want the project to address the government's needs, they are actually serving the government. How can we achieve academic freedom and autonomy then? For these two concepts, it involves setting your own topics, your own directions and areas. And as long as the topics are about local issues, local public policies, that's fine. But when they vet the applications, it's not what they look at. So on the face, they say is to respond to government's needs. But if your application is not about what they want, you will not get the funding. You may make free application, you may apply freely. But where are all these sorts of freedoms in the way? So I think this is a political issue. So people will serve the government in doing research. How can you say we can achieve academic freedom? I'll give them some time to answer, but I still have some more questions. So simply, can you just implement the second part of what you said in the paragraph, but not the first part? What do you mean by the first and second parts? Did you, did you hear me? Did you listen to me? The parts I just read out, I'm sure they did hear. So the first, the second part, you can't answer. Well, if I understand correctly, Mr. Leng said it's not good for the research to serve the government. Research should not pander to the needs of government. But the government seeks to improve governance, what's wrong with that? It's also the aims proposed by Professor Lau in 2004 when he launched the scheme. Just one more line. In the vetting mechanism, you already block academic freedom. Let me give you an example, I do research in CPU. We do some research for government departments. We invite certain officials and other people for the research. But in that case, we do not invite their bosses. Because we want to ensure, to make sure, the interviewees can speak their mind without any influence. If we really want to impact the academic freedom, we would just leave all I've said aside. No, of course, we have to see whether we really see any improvement in the funding, fundings of the project. We're supposed to end the meeting at 12, but some members would like to speak, so I'll extend the meeting to 12:15. Mr. Kwok Him. Thank you, Chairman. Many friends have already expressed their views. There's one particular line I find meaningful. Politics come to universities. And having heard the deputations, I think that's true. People don't trust the government and they criticize the government, they have gone to extreme in their criticism. I have two questions, but they may not be related to the topics under Education Panel. One question is about CPU, how can they do a better job in public policy research? What's the role of CPU? It's part of the administration. It has to provide policy research for government's consideration. Now, is it the case that in previous research, there were some not beneficial to government's policy? It's a point raised by colleagues. Now, I want to know if that's the case. If one well, if the CPU engaged in a research that's not beneficial to government, what exactly is the CPU doing? So first questions for the CPU. Second question to RGC. Lawmakers and deputations have spoken their mind, we are worried that politics come to universities, comes to academic research. Academics have their backbones, they have their own ideas. But we agree that we should have research on policies. Can we rally more involvement? Thank you for the question. Whether CPU should do some research that's not beneficial to government's policy? The answer is negative, of course. Policy is to address problems in the community, of course, we want to come up with project that can improve government's policies and improve the economy and livelihood of Hong Kong. Now, there's one point we have to clarify. Now, there's one point we have to clarify. Research under CPU has to be based on facts. But does it mean that we do not incorporate opposition? That's not the case. We have to incorporate all sorts of opinions for the administration to consider. Now, the research is based on facts. It's only in this case that we can identify the possible problems within a policy. RGC supplement? We continue with the research, as I've said, because it's important to Hong Kong and the government. PPR can be divided into bottom-up and top-down. Bottom-up means the academics can raise the research they would like to do, and officials and political elements will not be taken into account under these research. We can make sure that such research will focus on the academic perspective alone. SPPR is, is a scheme for the administration to set down the direction. But we also follow the established vetting mechanism in assessing whether the research is of value. Even for SPPR research, they have high academic value. Mr. Chan Kwak Chu.
Now, if CPU colleagues can answer me quickly, I won't even take a minute. A question for either Professor Wong or Mr. Wong of CPU. Dr. Fernando Cheung, men about, talk about some, the academics choosing the research topics and setting up their own project and doing their own research. Would you still maintain such autonomy? Now, we invite Policy Bureau to propose research areas. And then we will decide in the assessment panel on the scope of research. And then we'll make that public for reference by scholars. Our consideration is that we are not an academic institute ourselves, we are a think tank. So our policy research will focus on practicality. That's why we will only do research on issues of concern to government, or in relation to government departments. So we may not do what we've done in the past. Thank you, Professor Wong. So it's all top-down, no bottom-up then? No, there is bottom-up. The, for the other two areas, it will be entirely bottom-up. Which other two areas? You mentioned the three areas, publication, you know, said, the freedom to decide on research topics, set up project and publish results. So for the research outcome, how they, you know, comment on that. So it's same as the SPPR, yes. So it's just the SPPR then, there's no longer PPR, right? Another point, also asked by Dr. Fernando Cheung, but it's not answered. Would you only invite applications?
No. We're doing the same as RGC, there will be open invitation. It won't be invitation such, you know, open up application. You mean, you won't invite three applicants and you just pick one or something like that? No, no, definitely, it's not like that. Because in the past, CPU invited to consulting, but that's a different kind of projects altogether. Third point, the professor said that all research outcome would be published. Yes, correct. But I understand when the CPU does not make public any of its research outcome. No, this is separate, is separate. The PPR, we have made this clear here. And with the concern of the assessment panel, the outcome we've made public. You mean for the twenty million dollars, that the outcome be made public? Yes, correct. Of course, for the other policies, research, it will be, they will be considered case by case. Next, Mr. Porter.
Mr. Chairman, I won't speak in such strong terms as Mr. Wong Yook Man to say that it's waste of breath, because we're just talking about twenty million dollars. But I think we need to consider the proportion, the magnitude of the issue, whether it should spark off such a huge debate. Twenty million dollars, are they going to be given to those already doing projects, or we didn't give them to someone new? That's not really the issue. Now, if CPU had, is headed by Joseph Len maybe, then you, there won't be so many complaints. So we shouldn't be targeting individuals, we should look at the issues. We have to consider whether there is a need for reform. And another point is, my observation is that this is not the only source of funding. There are other fund, research grants. So this is on top of other research grants, this particular funding scheme. So against that background, I'd like to ask two questions. Professor Wong, Professor Chin. You said just now, there was the consideration of academic excellence. So apart from the research topics, were you happy with the research outcome? We wouldn't know. We would like to have a chance to find out. Now, in the past, yes, we see that the research topics were relevant, but what about the quality of research and the outcome of research? You find them satisfactory and that they deserve to be given for, such project should deserve to be given funding? And another point, you said one reason why, yeah, four reasons why it makes a change, because you want to allow applications around, throughout the year. And then the CPU could help to liaison with government officials and so on, so there could be more communication, certain site visits. And fourth, you said that apart from the age UGC funded institutes, there are other think tanks or institutes who, which could also seek funding here. Is it the case under the current mechanism, you can't do that? You have to go through the CPU before you could achieve these four areas of improvement? Is that the case? If so, why?
Professor Wong, first, about academic excellence first. Let me answer the question. Not all the projects have been completed. For the completed projects, we do not just assess the submitted proposal, we also assess the outcome, the publication and so on, that is. And of course, in the course of assessment, we may rate some projects as satisfactory, others as not. And there bound to be certain projects which are not satisfactory, maybe because, say, the professors have left Hong Kong, whatever. But for the majority of the outcome is satisfactory. And also, in view of needs of the community, we ask the researchers to publish their outcome in layman terms in the newsletter. And the newsletter is passed on to government officials and all relevant parties. So they will know that the government has funded this project, and this is the outcome. And if the public or stakeholders find this useful, they could then this directly with the professors and students concerned. We also held workshops. So that the professors explain their research outcome to CPU colleagues, students and so on. Professor Wong, thank you. And right now, we don't allow applications, don't accept applications throughout the year. And second point, CPU being the intermediary. What is it that you can't do now, you can only do in future, when you take control of the scheme again? I don't see such observations at the moment. We are a government think tank, is a high-level government think tank. And we can play a more active role in this respect. Third point, few visitor I don't follow. Fourth point. Opening up the scheme to other institutions and think tanks. Now, for the RGC and UGC, they serve mainly the age universities. Professor Chin said that from colleagues other than these, coming from other than these universities or think tanks, they could serve as investigators. But we are saying that apart from the age universities, other institutes and think tanks could apply for funding as it researches themselves. But what is it that you can't do under the current scheme? Now, I think you've used up your time. There are a few minutes, should be my chance to ask questions.
Professor Wong or Mr. Stanley Wong? Can I ask you this? You're proposing this change to the funding arrangement. I think for the deputations individuals present here today, you've heard the views, and you've also heard the views of many electrical members. We are concerned that whether this change might lead to political interference with academic freedom. And many students have expressed concern that it could, could be a form of political oppression, and they could control public opinion. Some questioned whether there will be no more independence in the vetting process. Then you will, and then the vetting would be based on political concerns alone, or political considerations though. And some have expressed concern too, that if officials are to be involved in future, would they then take control over the vetting? Or they might steer the vetting? So you've heard all these concerns just now. Professor Chin mentioned that in the past, the twenty million dollars were well spent. They did a lot of work with that kind of money. So the money was well spent. And Professor Wong, you also mentioned the, the reasons why you wanted to, why you want, propose the change. And I'm not going to question, I'm not going to pursue a lot of questions on that. But Deputy Chairman wanted to propose a motion. My share, I'm going to ask something similar to that. It seems that in whole process, there was no consultation done, there was no discussion carried out. Or you didn't even sort of notify people. Now, some use terms like banned it or whatever. But why is it that you didn't carry out discussion, you didn't conduct consultation? Why didn't you even tell people? And then you just made the change all of a sudden? What sort of mindset is that? But I think respecting others is important, especially if you want to collaborate with the academia, there must be real true respect. So having heard all the views, would you reconsider the matter? Some have said that twenty million dollars was, is just a small sum in relation to the assets of the S L government in relation to his reserve and so on. So would you consider leaving this twenty million dollars with the RGC? And then perhaps, if CPU could find yourself another twenty million dollars somewhere to do the work?
Who's to answer the question? Let me try, Mr. Chairman. Academic freedom. Say you are a scholar or you're lecturer, and then you make some comments, or you publish certain research outcome afterwards, you are oppressed. Then that's interference with academic freedom. So that's the viewpoint held among the public. So on this matter here, I don't see where we have the power to do something like that. Or how we might be able to influence the career prospects of scholars, for instance. Consultation, of course, is always the more the better. And I will consider this view. There's no consultation to speak. No, 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 there was consultation. We went to visit Professor Chin at the RGC and discussed the matter with him. Well, there's always different interpretation, whether it was consultation or not. Sorry? This is my time. Let me ask my questions. There are various interpretations to consultation. I was there. I didn't just inform him. We put forward our proposal. Professor Chin could give his views. If he didn't agree, we could consider it. You can't put it that way. Sorry? Both you, Helena Wong and Lang Yichong, you have used up your all time. Now, but I don't plan to pursue the question because there's no more time. No, no, it's just to seek clarification, it's not about making a speech. No, 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 he's answered my question. If after he answers a member's question, you're given a chance to seek elucidation, then we can never finish the meeting. You, you, I've heard his answers, I understood his answers. So whether I accept his answer or not is a matter for me, really. Now, I've extended the meeting to twelve fifteen, we've passed that time. I'd like to deal with Mr. Kim Yun's motion. I will circulate his motion to members, but I will not accept that we discuss this motion at this meeting for several reasons. One, we passed the meeting time. Two. I, there's no time for members to propose amendments to the motion. Three, there's no time for members to discuss the motion because we have already overrun by more than twenty minutes. So I will circulate the motion to members, where there is an appropriate occasion, perhaps at the next meeting, we could come back to this motion.
Mr. Chairman, procedurally, I cannot accept your handling with this motion. Because more than half an hour ago, I submitted paper to the Secretariat, and I asked the Secretariat person on the paper, the members, members should have enough time to read it. But I found out you've only just distributed the rulings to members. That's why we don't have time to deal with it now. It took me some time last night, working hard on this motion. Deputy Chairman, I accept your complaint and criticism. But I must insist on my ruling. That is, we passed the scheduled meeting time, and I do not have time to deal with your motion. And I, there's no time also for members to discuss or propose amendments to the motion because we've overrun, actually, members already left. So I declare the meeting closed. Thank you for coming.